Little meeting to order. First item is roll call, all the persons are present and in the chambers. I'd also like to welcome the new chief, his first council meeting. Congratulations, good luck. Especially who you're sitting next to. Next item of business is a pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation. If you could please stand, please. Next item is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on May sixteenth. What are your wishes? Let's have a motion by Bemke, second by Veneman. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Item five is the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter eleven, eleven zoning ordinance, specifically section eleven point oh six, sixty-seven, parent C. Parking of a commercial vehicle as auxiliary or ancillary residential use to allow for greater flexibility in the standards for commercial vehicles. We have a motion by Delaney and seconded by Austin.
My motion is to approve removing the language of pickup truck.
Correct. And that's your second, Mr. Uh, thank you. Any further comments or discussion? All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's to one N. Public hearing on a zoning map amendment.
This is Kyle, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, Kyle, thank you. Go ahead. You have any comments, Kyle?
No, just wanted to make sure that my audio was okay.
Okay. Where is zoning map? Is it the land use one? Kyle, is the zoning map the one in the planning commission packet?
It's the comprehensive plan amendment.
Do you have it? Everybody got it? So we're going to hold a public hearing, so let's open a public hearing at six oh five P M. Does anybody wish to speak against the zoning map amendment? For a second time, does anybody wish to speak against the zoning map amendment? For a third time, does anybody wish to speak against the zoning map amendment? Does anybody wish to speak in favor of the zoning map amendment? And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the amendment? And for a third and final time, does anybody wish to speak against the zoning map amendment? Close the public hearing at six oh six P M. Move on to. Item seven is consider the adoption, the actions of the planning commission meeting held at its meeting on May eleventh and June fifth. We can take up the first one, which I can read. The planning commission met at four P M. on May eleventh in the council chambers. List of attendees are on file in the clerk's office. The first item was to approve the previous minutes, which was done by a motion of five to zero. Item two was twenty-three dash zero, 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 two, eight, five, the dental suite LLC. They request, was a request for a site plan and architectural review for commercial building addition and site improvement to twenty-three oh one Chestnut Street. Background was given. A list of conditions were also outlined and it was moved and seconded to approve that five zero. Item three is city Wisconsin Rapids conceptual comprehensive plan, future use map amendment, which we've had a public hearing on just recently, review and zoning map amendment review for properties located at Clyde Avenue, Growout Avenue, between twelfth Street and Fourteenth Street South. Mister Kearns, Kyle Kearns, gave a background on that. And let's see. And then there was no action taken. Item four was adjournment and the meeting adjourned at four twenty-eight P M. Might have to take that. Any questions, comments? Or motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Move on to the next one, which is June fifth. That meeting was called to order at four P M. in the council chambers, list of attendees are on file, previous minutes were approved. Item, the second item was twenty-three dash zero, zero, three, five, nine, Michael Jan Nelson, our request, action on a request for amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, specifically map seven dash two, future land use map, to reclassify that parcel located at four twenty-first Avenue South from commercial land use classification to residential land use. Background was given, there was a motion to approve, which carried six zero. Item three is twenty-three dash zero, zero, three, five, nine, also, Michael Jan Nelson, public hearing and action on a request for a zoning map amendment to rezone that parcel at four twenty-first Avenue South from B three neighborhood, commercial district, R two mixed residential district. A public hearing was open and closed, no one spoke in favor or against. A motion was made to request that the zoning map amendment be rezoned in a parcel, at that parcel located at four twenty-first Avenue South. That motion carried six zero and the meeting was adjourned at four thirteen P M. And what are your wishes?
Will do approve.
We have a motion by Austin to approve, seconded by Zachar. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We are on to item eight, consider for adoption, the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. First one is finance and property meeting held June sixth. Mister Zachar.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Report of the finance and property committee meeting, June sixth. All members of the finance and property committee were present, called to order at four oh two P M. Item two, consider referral from the fire department regarding funding for energy audit findings. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve funding up to five thousand five hundred for energy audit findings, motion carried three to zero. Item three, consider a referral from the fire department regarding discussion on replacement of truck five. Staff was directed to provide a timeline of financial obligations to be considered at a future meeting, no action was taken on this item. Item four, consider referral from the public works, works department to review and approve the purchase of a single pass automated refuse truck. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve the purchase of a single pass automated refuse truck at a price not to exceed three thousand eight hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, plus up to ten percent over that amount to allow for any price increase that may occur prior to receiving the truck, motion carried three to zero. Item five, consider for approval, a taxi cab license renewal application from Randy Wayos for Gotta Go Taxi LLC is moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to approve and the motion carried three to zero. Item six, consider for approval, especially events application, street closure, closure request and temporary retail class B fermented malted beverage license application for the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce, Inc. at one one two zero Lincoln Street for an outdoor off the clock event to be held on Wednesday, July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, rain date, July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from four P M. to six P M. at Shopmaster, located at eight five zero Rosecrand Street. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve and the motion carried three to zero. Item seven, consider for approval, temporary retail class B fermented malted beverage license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, Inc. at two six five one Eighth Street South for the following events. A, music on the patio event to be held from six P M. to nine P M. on the following Fridays, June twenty-third, July twenty-eighth, and August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. B, exhibit openings to be held from five thirty P M. to seven thirty P M. on Friday, July fourteenth, and Thursday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And C, holiday gifts and arts fair event to be held from five thirty P M. to seven thirty P M. on Thursday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-three. And a temporary retail class B fermented malted beverage license and temporary retail class B wine license for an art on tap event to be held from five thirty P M. to eight thirty P M. on Saturday, October seventh, two thousand twenty-three. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve and the motion carried three to zero. Item eight, consider for approval, temporary retail class B fermented malt beverage license and temporary retail class B wine license for assumption athletic association at four four five Chestnut Street for a Royal Golf Scramble event to be held on July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, from five P M. to nine thirty P M. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Zachar to approve, motion carried three to zero. Item nine, consider request from Rapids LLC, doing business as Westside Express Mart, Damodar, Panda, agent for retail class A fermented malted malt beverage, retail class A intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at one zero four zero West Grand Avenue. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve and the motion carried three to zero. Item ten, consider request from the B N K Mart LLC, Rye Raj Canal Agent for retail class A fermented malt beverage and retail class A intoxicating liquor licenses for the premises located at one seven one one Baker Street. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Bemke to approve, the motion carried three to zero. Item eleven, consider request from Out of the Box Coffee House, Inc., doing business as Out of the Box Coffee House, Teresa Cashman, agent for retail class B fermented malted malt beverage and retail class B intoxicating liquor licenses for the premises located at three eight two zero Eighth Street South. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to approve and the motion carried three to zero. Item twelve, consider for approval of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four retail class A intoxicating liquor, class A fermented malt beverages, class B intoxicating liquor, class B fermented malt beverages, class C wine licenses, consider sending notices of renewal or denial for those licenses who are not qualified to hold a license because of delinquencies or other disqualifications and other reasons for non-renewal. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve and the motion carried three to zero. Item three, consider closing the following streets and suspending the open container ordinances for these streets and adjoining sidewalks for the cities two thousand twenty-three, Fourth of July event from three P M. to eleven fifty-nine P M. on Tuesday, July fourth, two thousand twenty-three, or the Fourth, July Fourth fireworks rain date. Second Street, from East Jackson Street to Mead Street, Mead, Locust, Witter, Pine, Walnut, Maple, and Birch Streets, from Second Street South to Third Street South, Oak Street, from North Street to, or North, Second Street North to Third Street North, First Street North, from East Jackson Street to Second Street North, Grand Avenue, from Third Street to Third Avenue, First Avenue South, from West Grand Avenue to Chase Street, Johnson and Goggins Streets, from First Avenue South to Third Avenue South, Second Avenue South, from West Grand Avenue to Johnson Street. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Zachar to approve, motion carried three to zero. Item fourteen, consider recommendation from statewide services to deny a claim from Rand Dan Roder for vehicle damage allegedly caused by a loose chunk of concrete in the roadway on Eighth Street on April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. It was moved by Bemke and seconded by Veneman to approve and motion carried three to zero. Item fifteen, two thousand twenty-three budget amendment, number two, it was moved by Zachar, seconded by Bemke to approve and the motion carried three to zero. Budget discussion, the budget was discussed, no action was taken on this item. Item seventeen, audit of the bills, it was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to approve, check number is one six nine six eight two one seven three three three, motion carried three to zero. Next, item eighteen, next meeting date was set on Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, at four P M. And nineteen, adjournment, it was moved by Zachar, seconded by Bemke, motion carried three to zero to adjourn at five thirty-three P M. With that, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, we have a motion by.
Yep.
Zachar, seconded by Catna. Any items need to be held out?
I don't know if it does or not, item twelve, Jennifer, do we have to discuss that?
The liquor license?
Uh, we do have one applicant that owes money, so we would, your direction then to me would be to send a letter of non-renewal until it's paid.
So we should probably hold that out?
I will tell you they're in the process of taking care of it, but if I don't have it before June thirtieth, then I can't renew.
We can hold out the item if everyone's good with that? We all need to hold it out?
No.
Okay. Okay, I guess we're good, we all need to hold it out? Mister Raum.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess just maybe refresh my memory, I'd be item seven. All these temporary licenses that we're giving out and whatnot. Were we gonna, or did a referral have to be turned in and have a discussion on this? Or where, where were we at at the end of this, at some point in time? Or some of these are just continually, you know, it's not a per se picnic type of thing or whatever that we're doing this, that is for ongoing twelve months and sometimes more, I think than once a month even for events taking place. That, I, you know, is there. And then you look at people applying for liquor licenses, coming due and whatnot, which we don't have, but I get, where are we at on that, or aren't we anywhere really? I know it's been, it's been brought up.
So we did have a discussion on that, was that a legislative committee, I think? And they determined that.
Was that it? Okay.
Yeah.
Refresh my memory, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And they aren't doing that many events, and so this is, this should be all of them. So, yeah.
All right. Memory short sometimes, thank you. No.
All right, Mister Lee.
I just have a question on number fourteen. Now, typically this is, this happens a couple times a year and it just comes to the committee to deny the claim and then from there, because it shortens the timeline and I was just wondering what information the committee gets on that? Do they, do they get to review any of the claim or they just automatically deny it?
Standard procedure on these is that we submit the claim to our insurance company and they get all the information and then based on their investigation, they recommend either denial or they pay the claim. So really what the finance committee's procedures there is pretty much standards that they're really just denying the claim in order to shorten that statutory timeline to six months. It does not preclude the claimant from pursuing further legal action, it's just shortening it up to have six months to pursue it further from a legal standpoint.
Could you tell me how many of these are actually approved and how many of them are denied or are they automatically all just denied?
I, I, I can't, I can't speak to exactly, I mean, usually when it's something like in the road or whatever, it's, you know, it, the, the city did not have knowledge of the, you know, item in the, in this case, the concrete in the road, so we're not liable for any damage due to the vehicle because of it. So, but usually that's the, the case, it's, we get a variety of different types of claims from, you know, you know, there was a lawnmower that shot something out and we, you know, further investigations, like it wasn't even in the city limits, you know, so there's a lot of different things, so. But I can't speak to exactly how many we, you know, are denied compared to that we pay out at this point, off my head.
And I guess because of the timelines within which we need to deny, I, I know there has been occasion though, that even though we've denied it, we may still have settled with the claimant, right? But I would say the vast, the very vast majority of these claims are denied because of the immunities that the city has regarding the majority of the incidents, but it does not, this would not preclude if some, something, new evidence came to light or something or they were, that, that we might, could not settle with them. But we're, we're denying it to shorten the statute of limitations and then that person can still sue us or could still negotiate a settlement.
Thank you, I just had it, it comes up every few months and I, I didn't know exactly how that process worked, thank you, thanks Tim.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the report. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on the public works committee meeting held June eighth. Mister Raum.
Thank you, Your Honor. The public works committee met on Thursday, June eighth, two thousand twenty-three, in the council chambers at City Hall and we have a remote video conference. Tom Raum and Dennis Pollock were in attendance, Ryan Austin was absent, excused, others attending are listed below. Item one was called a meeting order, it's called to order at five oh two P M. Item two, review engineering and street department monthly activity report, the reports were reviewed. Item three, review and consider adding yield control on Avon Street at Fourteenth Street North. There was a motion by Pollock, seconded by Raum, to approve adding yields, yield control on Avon Street, Fourteenth Street North, including addressing vegetation in the Vision Triangle. That motion carried two to zero. Item four, review and consider approval of the state municipal agreement for the highway safety improvement project for pedestrian crossing at Eighth Street South and Wood Avenue intersection. There was a motion by Raum, seconded by Pollock, to approve the state municipal agreement as presented, that motion carried two to zero. Item five, review the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven capital improvement plan in preparation for the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight capital improvement plan. The draft capital improvement plan was reviewed, a final version will be brought back for approval in July or August. Item six, review the referral list, the list was reviewed and updated. Item seven, set, set the next meeting date, that's July fifth at five P M., that's a Thursday. Item number eight is a motion and a second, motion by Raum, seconded by Pollock, to adjourn at five forty P M., that motion carried two to zero. And others in attendance are on a sign in sheet and with that I move for adoption of the meeting.
Thank you, we have a motion by Mister Raum, seconded by Mister Pollock. Any further discussion or questions on the report? Yes. Oh, go ahead.
No, that's all right, I, and I probably made it.
No, I appreciate it.
Comment after right away, but just on item three, and we did approve it and whatever, but I, I do, I hopefully that, the inclusion in there of addressing the vegetation in the Vision Triangle, that that'll be looked at by city staff accrues, you know, to clean that up because I think, I think that is part of, not necessarily the whole problem, but part of the issue that could also enhance with having the yield sign, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Benham.
It, it'll likely be the August timeline, but, you know, if we can advance those discussions and, and move it forward if, if that's, if that's desired, otherwise we'll take our time a little bit and just make sure we include everything in the next five year cycle.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. Oh, sorry Josh. That motion carried eight A's, zero, zero N's. Wave your hands a little bit more there Josh, thanks, sorry about that. Don't hurt yourself though. Uh, item C is human resource committee meeting held June thirteenth. Uh, Mister Bemke.
Thank you, the human resource committee met Tuesday, June thirteenth at City Hall. All committee members were present, a list of others in attendance are on file in the clerk's office. Item one, called to order at two seventeen. Item number two, discuss and consider for approval, a pay increase for the head lifeguard position at the aquatics facility, ranging from thirteen to sixteen dollars per hour. There's a motion by Catna, seconded by Bemke, to approve the pay increase for the head lifeguard position at the aquatics facility, ranging from thirteen to sixteen dollars per hour. Motion carried three to zero. Item three, discuss and consider for approval, the proposed changes to the deputy chief of police, police lieutenant and police sergeant job descriptions with the police department, see the attachment. Was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke, to approve the proposed changes to the deputy police chief, police lieutenant. deputy police chief, police lieutenant, and police sergeant job description, descriptions, motion carried two to one. Item four was discuss and consider for approval the proposed job description for the code enforcement officer position as a sworn officer with the police department. There was a motion by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve the job description as proposed for the code enforcement officer position as a sworn officer within the police department, as a special duty appointment of the police chief, motion carried two one. Item number five, consider for approval a memorandum of understanding with the Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association regarding recruiting officers. The M O U was attached, motion by Katnaugh, seconded by Delaney, to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association regarding recruit officers, motion carried three zero. Meeting was adjourned at three, there was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke, motion carried three zero. Meeting was adjourned at three fifty-five P M, and with that, also meant for approval.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
So, a motion by Bemke for approval of the report, is there a second? It was seconded by Mr. Zachar, uh, Mr. Raum.
Thank you again, Your Honor. Item four, and I was at the meeting, um, that, uh, and I know that last month we voted to move this to the P D, which we did, um, and I just wanted to, I guess, I guess what I probably should do is, uh, hold this out.
Okay.
For separate vote. Hold that way to start with.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Yes, number four. Uh, Mr. Katnaugh.
Uh, hold out, item two.
No.
Three.
Three? Everyone good with that? Okay. So, we have, uh, motion and a second on the balance of the report, to approve the balance of the report. Anything else? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one N. Uh, take them in order, uh, item three. Mr. Katnaugh.
Thank you. I had a question regarding the requirements for the police lieutenants, that the position titles police lieutenant, but that would include the detective lieutenant position?
That's correct, there's no distinction between the two.
Okay. Yes, I, my main area of not concern, but that it, regarding the detective lieutenants, is the requirement for one year of sergeant experience?
Yes.
I'm thinking in my head right now, the, do any of the detectives we have in that bureau have any sergeant experience?
They do not.
Okay. So, I would like to amend it to allow them to at least apply for the position and remove the sergeant experience for the position description of police lieutenant. For, only for detectives, though. I don't know. I would just like to see the detective bureau, the guys who have been there, I think they do a good job, and give them the opportunity to apply, I think, as it is, I don't, I don't even know how that would work, would they have to go back down to patrol sergeant, or?
Well, wouldn't, it wouldn't be back down, it would be a promotion. It is, it is on.
Okay.
From a detective to a, to a sergeant would be a promotion.
Okay, so they would, it would go from the detective bureau down, or not down, um, onto patrol? I guess I just don't understand how that works.
Under the, under the current, under, under the current, uh, status, that's correct. Yeah, an alternative would be to, uh, put a sergeant position back into, uh, in the detective bureau.
Okay. I would like to amend the language, the, state that any current detective can apply to be a lieutenant detective for the position of police lieutenant.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, yes. I'd make a motion to amend the language for the position of police lieutenant to include any current detective in the detective bureau be allowed to apply for the position of lieutenant detective.
Uh, Mr. Zachar.
Uh, no, I'm being asked to vote on something that I don't really understand, I guess. Um, Chief, would you explain it to us, like, more about what, how this, the terminology, the, the way it was written, why it was written that way, and is that important?
Uh, yeah, to me, it's very important, uh, that we don't skip ranks, um, in a police department, and having, uh, an, a detective skipping the rank of sergeant to go directly to lieutenant is not something that I would be willing to do. It's just the, the, the way the rank structure goes, it's patrol. Detectives are a little bump in pay, um, but there're no diff, there's no other distinction between a detective and a patrol officer, so, um, inviting, um, a notion that we would skip the sergeant position for anyone at that level and goes directly to a lieutenant's position is not something that I would consider at this point.
Thank you, sir. So, we currently have a motion, but no second. Go ahead.
Hey, my thought on it is.
We should, we should probably get a second.
Sure.
If, if the continued, continued discussion, if there, if there's no second, then there's really no point in having a discussion. Second by Delaney, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I guess my thought on it was, and that the, the detectives that we have there, I mean, when I think of an organization, oftentimes I think of perhaps the top performing person at that position often becoming the leader, and it, this one just seems to stand out a little from the others, and that there's the whole, entire detective bureau doesn't have position yet, or, uh, experience yet, and there's, would have to go to a different position and then come back up and be lieutenant. It, it just seems a little wonky to me, in other areas, you would see someone who is the best in their department oftentimes go to be the leader, that's why I pulled this out and made the motion. I don't understand necessarily how a police department usually goes about those promotions, obviously, you do more, but that's, was the purpose of the motion, is the, that's how I usually see things, if a department is running and there's people in there, that would be a good fit for the leader of that department, I think that person should be eligible to apply to be the leader, is, was my thought process.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Benham.
Yes, um, Chief, could you, you mentioned an alternative would be to create a sergeant position? Could you see what you, explain what you meant on that?
Yeah, um, there has been some discussion about, uh, creating a, the sergeant position in the detective bureau and not adding a body, so, would that, that would mean that, um, someone who would have, would apply for the sergeant's position and, and test for sergeant's position within the police department would be appointed to that, uh, would be promoted to that position. Depending on the, uh, the process, um, it would more than likely, uh, end up being one of the current detectives that we have in, in the, uh, the bureau. Um, we have a lot of, just like, uh, um, just like you said, a lot of talented people in there, um, and I think that they will do well in the process, and we do have a couple of them that have, uh, applied for the sergeant's position.
And your thoughts on that as an alternative?
My thoughts on it?
Yes.
Um, I, I guess, full disclosure, I'm in the process of requesting that we do just that. And it's, the, the cost is nominal, um, it's about three thousand dollars a year difference in pay between, uh, a detective and, uh, the detective sergeant position. So, uh, I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Delaney.
Is there any of these positions that are going to be opening in the near future, where we're going to need to, uh, fill this with the current, or with this requirement that you had laid out here? And if so, are we gonna have to look outside of the police department, or outside of the city? To bring somebody in to fill those positions?
Um, no, all the promotions will be handled, we do have, uh, we will have promotions, um, and we're in the process of of setting up a, an eligibility list for the promotions, and all the promotions will be from within. Yes, we will have a few, uh, a few openings, uh, at the lieutenant level, as well as the sergeant level. That's correct.
And there's none in the detective bureau, so the current detective lieutenants here is newer, newer appointed, so, at this point, there's no intentions of needing to fill that immediately either, so, there's not this push to fill that, or create the sergeant position, even though it needs to be done, or should be done, if we want to kind of address this situation. Mr. Katnaugh.
Thank you, so, you mentioned this is the sergeant position in the detective bureau is something you've been considering, bringing it, would that be at next month's H R meeting, or what, what was your timeline on that?
Well, I have the, I've received the paperwork, and I'm in the process of, uh, completing that, and I would be, I would like to see it at the next H R meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll rescind my motion. Sure.
Yeah.
Well, let's.
We'll still need to vote on it. Just be just as easy to vote it down, too, if you want, either or. Your guys' motion.
Uh, that's for unanimous consent?
Oh.
Okay, well, there we go.
Sounds good. We've got a motion on the floor, a motion and a second. Everybody, everybody understand it? Okay. Please cast your ballots. If you want to shoot it down. So, the motion has failed, uh, with seven days and one abstention.
Doesn't Jake still have to vote for his motion?
It's a lot of red. Don't see that too often. Okay, let's move on to item number four. Um, that's, uh, Mr. Raum.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is where we moved, uh, code enforcement, uh, into the P D, which we agreed upon last month. I guess just to go over some questions for, for everybody, or whatever, um, when will somebody be starting on this job?
Uh, the timeline currently is probably late fall, mid to late fall, before I can, uh, get somebody appointed to that particular position. We are, um, we're ready to absorb the, the duties of that position on the patrol side until that, uh, position is filled. Only because, uh, is it Stark? Uh, because he's retiring in the next week, and somebody's going to need to, to take up those duties. But with our current staffing, um, I'm not, uh, prepared to pull someone off the street and put him into that position until we can start, get, uh, a couple people at least in the pipeline, uh, for, in the hiring process. So, I'm thinking probably maybe late August, early September, some, some, maybe even a little later than that, just depending on what, where we end up with our, with the hiring process.
And that, that's a, that's a big thing, is it, uh, is it not, that, uh, that somebody from inside wants to, uh, take over that job, and that, uh, and that technically we're gonna have nobody on it, I guess for a few months, or whatever it is, but I guess then where are we at in the eligibility, uh, list as far as, uh, hiring a new, uh, officer, and how long down the road does that look like?
Well, I do plan on filling the position even though, even before I have someone physically at the department hired. But I want to get the process going, where right now, we have someone in the background, in the process of doing a background, and then if that one pans out, and we can, uh, offer this individual, uh, a job, he will be going to the academy here, starting in August, um, and if we can, I'd prefer to get a couple, a couple more, at least, uh, in that process, so that when I do make that move from the patrol division to the code enforcement position, uh, at least for the morale of, of my police officer's position, um, they at least understand that there's a light at the end of the tunnel for the overtime and, and things like that, that are gonna be, um, forced from moving someone from patrol to that code enforcement position.
What is, I guess what's our procedure going to be? After the thirtieth with Mr. Stark's retirement? As far as what he did?
I can answer that, I mean, we're, we're going.
You know, ma, maybe I'm just making too much out of something here, but I, you know, it just, uh.
No, sir, I mean, your, your question's valid. Uh, you know, tho, those duties have to be done by someone, they have to be maintained in the interim here, so your question is very valid. We are going to absorb those duties, uh, other than, you know, building inspections and things of that nature. It's my understanding that that's going to remain, um, in community development, and, um, we're, we're going to be able to do that, and, you know, when complaints come in, we're going, we're gonna, going to address them on the patrol level, and, um, and handle them same way we always would. Just right now, because we have, we, we need to hire people, um, it wouldn't be in the best interest of the rest of the patrol staff to just go ahead and move someone, um, in the next couple of weeks, and then they're stuck, um, being forced to work overtime more than they already are, uh, to make up the difference on patrol, when, um, for the time being, it's not ideal, but for the time being, we can absorb that, um, at the patrol level.
Do you, uh, how much do you foresee, could, uh, um? The new code enforcement officer, when we have that, somewhere it was in here about directing traffic and that type of stuff. How much, how much, I guess, did a code officer presently do with some of this stuff that now is being listed as the PD? And I guess the question that goes along with it is, is there gonna be some overlap with the new code enforcement officer being a, maybe a partial regular patrol officer?
No. That would be, you know, kind of a last resort if we were to need the code enforcement officer to assist with us on, you know, maybe a severe traffic accident scene or something like that. The individual's there and he's, and he's free, then yes, we would utilize him to assist with traffic control and things like that. But as far as the patrol duties and the code enforcement duties intermingling, that's gonna be very limited.
Well, I, I hope we can get the full staff sooner than later. I think even as mentioned by the Police Commission Chairman at our last meeting, that the number of officers that we have compared to when he was 50 years ago hasn't changed. And where some may say, well, the size of the city hasn't changed, but that a lot has changed in the community everywhere.
Yes, sir.
How people live, what takes place and what it was 50, 50 years ago. And so hopefully, you know, that we can get back to at least full staff. But in the future, it may be even worthwhile to consider, you know, people don't like to hear it, but adding people.
Yes, sir.
To improve the situation because of how it, what has become. We're operating in 1970 way with number of people and we're in 2023.
Yes, sir.
With all the changes that have been made. And that's not just to say we, you know, I don't want a police society.
Correct.
So, that's, so people don't jump the gun on that too. But things have changed. Drugs are running more rampant than what they were and that type of stuff, you know? So, it's just, things have changed, you know? School situations and all the stuff, so. That's just, it's a concern of mine that we, you know, moving to this department, I accept that the change was made. We voted on it and did that, I accept that. We'll see how it works, but I, I hope we can somehow put this, speed up the process if it's possible even to, so we can get full staff of what the PD was and that we can have this code enforcement officer doing the code enforcement work. That I know, at least from listening to the people, was a, a big concern because that was, I think, one of the big arguments of actually changing it to the PD. More authority maybe or something, or somebody showing up with a badge maybe on it, may have, you know, not look, maybe the looks of it, maybe do more. But so, that, that's, that's the concern of mine is that we move with other, however we can up the speed on whatever to make sure it's done in a short ti, the shortest time as possible to get your crew back to full and the, the new one then to be doing their duties, so. Thank you, Your Honor. I will, I will, I guess I held it out, there's not a motion or anything to do anything, so. I will vote for it and I guess with the intent to see how we end up with this. If I can reserve that for a future maybe to discussion time to see where we are, where we're going. Because I, I, I really don't want to end up that we have somebody that's, I want to have a new, a new body. You know, I don't want it to be, become that we're gonna have, do this thing with overtime. There are people probably don't want to work a whole lot of overtime more either, maybe at times they do. But, you know, that we, we need the code enforcement being done, so we need somebody on that job and we need another PD per se, so.
Yes, sir, and that's what I'm trying to minimize.
So, that, that's, I won't, I'll vote for it, but again, I'll see what we have, what, how we transpire in the next few months. If I'd like to bring this back for, for the discussion to see where we're going, so thank you.
Your motion is to approve and you're second in that? And I, I also encourage you, Mr. Rayom, to, you know, he's readily available, give him a call, you know, check on status too.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Delaney?
I just have a procedural question because of number three, nothing was approved. We voted down the motion that was put forward. Do we have to put a motion forward to approve that item? So, I think you guys kinda went along.
We already did that. So, we have a motion and a second to approve. Yeah, remember you voted it. Oh. We can take it up. Good catch. All right, Mr. Zachar?
I just wanted to say, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Rayom, but at the same time, to me, this is a really kind of a unique position. So, also take your time and find the right person that has the personality that can do the job well, you know, because it's more than just the minimum. Not that police don't have a lot on their plate, but yeah, to me, it's a really, a unique position in a sense of being able to communicate really effectively. So, I think it behooves us to be able to take our time and find the right person for that job also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to approve the item as presented? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one nay, and we go back to item three. How do you wish to, oh, I'll wait for the clerk to catch up. What are your wishes regarding item three? We have a motion by Bemke to approve the item as presented. And we have a second by Mr. Pollock. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one nay. We're on to item D, as the committee of the whole report, the coming council meeting last night, June 19th, Mr. Veneman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. Uh, committee of the whole met last night, June 19th. Alder persons were present. Also present were Joe Weichstedt, Mayor Blazer, Sue Schill, and Jennifer Gosick. Council, item one, council president Veneman called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Item two, we, we reviewed and discussed the Wisconsin Rapids rail feasibility study. It was moved by Catnaud, seconded by Austin to direct staff to pursue alternate solution two dash three, which is a, is the value-based citywide solution with active signage. The motion carried with eight A's and no nays. Item three, which was consider eliminating standing committees and having two council meetings per month. It was moved by Catnaud, seconded by Delaney to direct city staff to prepare for council. A report with all ordinances which would need to be modified if standing committees were eliminated and there were two scheduled regular council meetings each month. Roll call vote was taken, which resulted in a tie, four ayes and, and four nays, motion failed. Voting in favor, Alderman Austin, Alderman Zachar, Alderman Catnaud, and Alderman Delaney. Voting against, Alderman Veneman, Alderman Rayom, Alderman Pollock, and Alderman Bemke. It was moved by, and item four was adjourned, moved by Delaney, seconded by Bemke. Motion carried, eight A's and zero nays, and the meeting adjourned at 7:54. With that, I'll move to approve the report.
Uh, Mr. Catnaud?
So, without rehashing everything that we went over last night, we did end in a tie. So, I guess before I would make any motion on item three.
Do you want to hold that item out?
Yes.
Because we're taking, right now, the motion is.
Yes, I want to hold item three.
Okay, so we have a motion, are we, everyone good with holding three out? Okay. Uh, Mr. Austin?
I would recognize Mr. Tom Muse if he'd like to speak.
How about we take a roll call on the balance of the report and then we'll take up item three as its own item?
Sure.
Sounds good. Then, uh, Mr. Muse can speak then. All right, any further discussion on the balance of the report? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays, and we're on to item three. Do we want to have a motion or guess? Yes. Okay, uh, Mr. Muse, if you want to take the mic. Oh, sorry, Mr. Rayom.
Uh, just a point of, point of order, I guess, here. We have that, the motion in the, you know, in the minutes failed and it's being held out, but yet what are we holding out for? We don't have, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a motion or a second. We don't have anything to debate. The motion failed last night. And that's what's being, that's what the issue is, is to vote on the failure. You can hold it out, but what, what are we, what's the attempt to do? Huh? It failed. It's in the minutes, it failed. But, but what, what's the intent to do? Or are you making a motion to approve? I guess, to me, I think somebody should move to do something.
So, get a motion on the floor, then open up the debate? Or, I guess you're the parliamentarian, I don't.
Well, I, I thought after last night that it was that there was no, since it did not basically clear the committee of the whole, that there was not, then there was no referral, no action item for the council to, to consider tonight. But that, that isn't what your all understanding was?
That was my understanding, Sue, but now it's back to.
I mean, I, it's on the, it's on the agenda. I think it's okay to discuss. I guess we can debate later where it might go from, from there in terms of what, if any, motion would be appropriate. But I, it's, it's on the council agenda as something that was discussed at committee of the whole. I think it's appropriate to be discussed. I might disagree with what, where it might go from there or what motion might be appropriate. But I think it's, it's fine to, to discuss.
Mr. Muse?
Thank you. Do I have a limited amount of time here? Approximately three minutes?
Three minutes, if you go over that, so we're not gonna be.
All right, um, after this was brought to my attention last night on social media, I was able to obviously discuss it with my better half and a few members within across the community. I also run and I'm the moderator of a Facebook group called the Wisconsin Rapids Concerned Citizens. I created this group middle of this winter for the opportunity for the public to actually voice their opinions on certain topics and concerns across the city. After watching the beginning of last night's meeting, it was brought to my attention for considering this eliminating standing committees. And my interpretation was that it was eliminating committees like the preservation committee, things like that. An individual brought to my attention that it was about these standing committees. Immediately, I then contacted my representative and he described what he understood from this the best he possibly could. Now, as I'm sitting here, listening to your conversation, I can understand that there's a lot of confusion going on even amongst board members over this topic. If you guys are confused, can you imagine what the public is thinking right now? I really want to emphasize that my understanding of the committees is to remove all the special committees and leave it up to the board members to address these issues twice a month. We've been here for an hour and 10 minutes already and the amount of stuff in the pamphlet that has been gone out has completely disgusted me with some of the conversations and just the topics that have been brought up. I want to just remind everyone that from the amount of the public that's here, the faith that the public has in this board with decision-making is not the greatest. You might be voted in the office, but I want you to remind yourselves that the public has a hard time understanding the wording that you have here, let alone the conversations that you're having amongst each other. So, my understanding of this limiting the standing committee is that each alderperson has to show up twice a month to discuss the topics that are at hand. That's your job. There is no less expectation from the public than on its representatives. I truly believe that not twice a month, but every single week, the board should be together discussing the topics that are going on. Just like the public, when they are given a fine or an ordinance disposal unit, they have a certain amount of time to get the job done. I think the public believes that some of these topics have been taken on for a very long time and there should be a limitation of what it takes to get the job done. For instance, an example is the sidewalks that were installed in a high street on the west side of town. The homeowners were then given notices that they would have two years to repay the cost of the sidewalks. We have now things coming from the council and different discussions that are over two years old. With the things that have been going on with the mill properties, vacant properties across the city of, across the city, I do not believe that the issues are actually being, actually being the focal point. And it's to the point where I've gotten, I've just gotten so upset that I really looked at actually looking for, running for office myself. Because I can't necessarily count on the people that are voted in to carry out my wishes and dreams. I'm not one of these individuals that if I don't like it, I just move away. I grew up in this town and I want to see this town be as good as it ever was before. And if that means getting involved and getting in the face of board members and calling them out, I'm here doing it. I'm not the only one. I speak for a percentage of the population. While I'm at it, I just want to welcome the new chief to the area. As you can see with the failed policies, welcome to Wisconsin Rapids. The community puts a lot of, a lot of trust that our board members do and make the right choices. In the last hour and a half, majority of these topics could have been, could have been handled in a matter of seconds. So, my understanding with this eliminating standing committee is that a lot of the topics go straight to the board and it would shorten the process of being able to actually get something done. I'm for that, completely for that. But at the same time, because of the actions of the board over this time, I do not have the faith that if all these additional things come from meetings and go right to the board, that it can actually be handled. So, I believe there's a pro and con to both. And as you stated, it was a tie four-four vote last night.
You've got to wrap it up soon.
Say again?
Got to wrap it up soon.
Okay, so, I'm here tonight to, to announce that the public is aware of it. I've had multiple individuals contact me questioning this. And I believe it needs to be made very clear of exactly what the standing committees refers to and how the impact would be on the public if either way were to be chosen. With that, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Um, council, I guess, what are your wishes? Mr. Delaney.
Since it did die, uh, the four that had voted against this are going to be up for election this year. I'm sure we're going to have a new council next year, I'm fine with waiting until next year to, um, pursue this again.
Yes, go ahead.
So due to, due to the mayor's absence last night, we were unable to have a tie-breaking vote.
And I can't even vote in.
You can't vote on that particular-
No, it's a committee of the council.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yep. Um, I guess the, what are the next steps, or what are the options, I guess, or are there?
Well, it, there's, I guess it depends what, there is no ordinance prepared, there is no policies that are up for de- debate to be changed, so, this is basically going to be a referral. You know, whether it comes from committee of the whole, whether it comes from an individual, whether it comes from a citizen, it's going to be a referral probably to legislative for this type of thing. So I think the committee of the whole meeting was to talk about it in general, and then hopefully maybe make a referral, uh, you know, basically giving direction. But I think, uh, I think a referral to, if someone wants to change the, the way it is, I think a referral to legislative, uh, at the end of the meeting, outlining it, or giving it to the clerk in writing would be appropriate. Because it seems like something, you know, someone wants to change it, and I guess, uh, it wasn't resolved at committee of the whole, so perhaps through the committee structure, and, and then back to council for a vote? Is that, but what, why is that fun?
A big, it, we already did that.
It didn't go to, as, but, but to legislative committee?
Yeah, May first, that's-
Well, right, and then it was committee of the whole to, for, for debate on it, and so, we can go back to legislative. Well, okay, if you're saying that then there's not enough appetite to move forward with it, that's fine, then-
Right.
Then it's done, right? I, I'm just suggesting that there's nothing to keep someone from making a referral that's different than this, that more people might want, or, I mean, I there, there hasn't been an ordinance or a policy before any committee, you know, with, with the details of it at this point, so. I, you know, I'm not sure what, what, what you want to do, so it's hard for me to tell you what, how to, how to get there, but-
Uh, Mr. Elm? Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, uh, so, I mean, yeah, so, sending it back to committee, we did that on May first. We had the meeting yesterday, June nineteenth. So I don't think that would be the right choice of action, obviously, if it doesn't have support in a five-three format on council, we're not going to get it passed, and we tied last night four-four. So hypothetically, if we were to bring this back and it was four-four again, and it was on a if we made it out of committee of the whole, and we made it out of legislative committee, for example, and it came, and then we voted here at common council four-four, the mayor would technically be the tie-breaker. Or you don't, wouldn't have to vote. So I just wanted, before we keep going in this circle of whether we're going to do it or not, see if you had thoughts on that. Because if you're not in favor of it, then there's no point in pursuing it until, like Patrick said, there's perhaps a new council.
I'll be happy to share my thoughts. I'll be happy to share my thoughts. I listened last night. You know, I think there's value in the committee process, but I do think that sometimes things drag on. Um, I thi, I get frustrated when we sit here and we, we rehash and have the same discussion at a committee, that was at a committee meeting, a planning commission meeting, because an alderperson wasn't there. And so now we're discussing it again. And that kind of frustrates me, because I think it's our responsibility to be aware of what's going on in meetings, um, participate in those meetings. And if we, if we don't, then we need to watch them, and then reach out to staff to get additional information if we're, if we're not aware. Today, I spent some time, I actually watched Wapaka, um, a couple of their meetings, and, um, I'm not opposed to learning more about it, but I think, um, you know, like Mr. Muse pointed out, I think there's a lot of questions, and understanding what a standing committee is, because I've gotten questions too about people, like, uh, a member of the historic preservation commission reached out and said, oh, well, we just started this, is this over? And I said, no, this is, only pertains really to public works, HR, and finance. And a lot of people don't understand that, and I, I think for more people to feel comfortable, we need more information, a little better explanation. Um, I plan if, I, I still plan on watching some more, uh, Wapaka meetings, um, even though Wapaka's not the same size as us, but, um, they ran very well. And I would reach out to the mayor and the city administrator there also, find out questions and concerns. So that's my thoughts. Mr. Elm? Finally.
Well, I, I thought we've, it failed last night, and that's what we'd be, that's what we're voting on, but, uh, it was held out, and I didn't hear to do anything different. It used to be that, uh, for a referral to be put back in after defeated was, uh, we had a six-month, uh, moratorium. Otherwise, things could be, month by month, keep coming back up and keep coming back up. I think that, uh, what we did last night is that, uh, approved, uh, continue working as we are. Hope, I guess maybe there has been a misconception of what took place last night. That shouldn't be, as the mayor just stated, it had to do with the three standing committees. And so I think with the, with the failure of that, that we're, um, obviously looking at if things can be approved, uh, to be brought forward and that, but that we're, uh, we're operating as we have operated. The consideration of changing at the moment, uh, failed. So, the standing committees prevail and stay, the council stays as is. If, uh, you know, there's a tr, there was a try to change, change without any really thing to change to last night. Even though maybe you look at to go to two me, two meetings or something was, that's clarified, well, there are ord, a lot of ordinances that are involved, a lot of other things that were involved, would be involved, that have to be changed to go, get to that. And that has to all be spelled out ahead of time. We can't just vote to do something and then make the rules later. We have to know what we're voting on. And as far as if some people don't make the committee meetings, whatever, uh, at least we were not like, uh, maybe in Madison or Washington, whatever, that we have staff to research things and that type of stuff. But it is our duty, as much as we can, to make ourselves aware of what took place at these meetings. But it's also our duty and right, uh, to question or to bring up at the council meeting. Does that mean we have to rehash something that took place all the time? To me, it's, the rehash is that, not, to me, it's not to rehash. It's that I am passionate about something, and I may want to vote against what took place at the committee meeting. And that's my right to do, but that's my, also my obligation to do to my constituents. My constituents are my boss. And lo, it'll, it won't come to pass with me, anyway. To shorten the thing up, to take away people's constituents' right to vote, to become aware, it's our, it's our duty to become aware as much as we can, what took place at these meetings. I used to have a real job, too, a regular job. I spent many hours at meetings here, without extra pay. I took time off from work and went to committee meetings, commission meetings. Didn't turn in the bill. That's our duty, if we care. Can we make the city better? Damn right we can. But it's, this is not the way. Two council meetings? I don't know, maybe you consider that, but the committee should be, which, should stay. I'm passionate about things. I won't take the easy way out. We were elected to do a job, to serve this community, to serve our constituents. To try to better this community. And yeah, we have vacant mill, we have this, but that is to try to overcome that. That's not to always use as an excuse of what we used to have. Let's have something different. I grew up here. Seventy-one years ago, I was born in Wisconsin Rapids. I grew up, as a kid, though, in Port Edwards, went to high school in Rapids. I was gone for a short time for schooling and that. But I came back, and I've stayed. We got to quit feeling sorry for ourselves and make ourselves better. Have an outlook that's positive, not always taking us back. So with that, Your Honor, I think, uh, I think we made, that the decision was made, uh, last night, that it failed, and I don't see that, uh, there's any, been any motion to, or, I guess I don't know what to change on here, uh, what, where we're at, but, uh, I just, I'm, I'm against the, the change at this present time, as it was last night, and I'm staying with that, so, thank you.
Mr. Benjamin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, thank you, Tom, um, I, and, as Tom said, there wasn't anything to vote on tonight. However, I am glad that we did recognize Mr. Muse, and this subject was brought to our attention. We, it appears that we might have a marketing dilemma, and the fact that, it appears that nobody understands the committee process, despite the fact that, um, all the meetings are open to the public, all the meetings are broadcast on Facebook and on the, all the committee meetings. And, um, and basically, I'm still in favor of beginning things at committee and bringing them to council, whether it, as Tom said, whether it was in one or two meetings is not really an issue to me. I still think committees are an important part of this process. And, again, that's where we, I feel that we get, we bring the, we break down the really specifics in the committee level, and then when we come to council, the theory is, is that it's ready to be discussed. Sometimes, again, as we discussed last night, we do rehash things over that were done at committee. I, for one, rarely miss any of the committee's meetings, although I'm only on two. Um, that's just some people, whether they have time or not. But we do have access to view these, along with the public, if we're not able to attend. We do have access to, and they're all recorded. And it is definitely our responsibility, if we are not able to be at those particular meetings, to know what happened, because we can't vote on something that we didn't participate in. We can, but it's, you know, it's, the lack of information is just not going to cut it. So, um, I'm happy to discuss anything with, um, Mr. Muse, or any of the people that are, would like to learn about what we're doing in committees, and I, my phone's on there, I'm always available, and I'd be happy to sit down and talk to anybody about this, and why I voted the way I did, and, um, and I'm not opposed to discussing, um, another option. So I just wanted to let you know that I do recognize we might have a, for better term, like a better term, a marketing issue in terms of, we're, we're not delivering the message in an understandable way, and, and, um, I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate your passion, so thank you for coming, Mr. Muse. That's it.
Uh, Mr. Catna?
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify some of the conversation here around this item number three. The motion last night was to direct staff to prepare a report for council with all the ordinances that would need to be modified if standing committees were eliminated, and there was two scheduled regular council meetings each month, that's as it reads in the minutes, that was my motion. That does not mean that the motion was to move, if that went through last night, to move to two committees. It was to direct staff to make a report on it. So I just wanted to clarify that, because there's some conversation, as if it passed last night, we were moving to that, and the motion was made to direct staff to give us a report on that, so, clarifying that.
Do we need to have a motion to, uh, adopt the item as presented? Or close it out? Right? The action of the, right? What are your wishes, council? We have a motion by Mr. Delaney, and that motion is?
To adopt this item as presented.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a second by Bemke, any further discussion? As- That's what yours, yeah. Okay, seeing no more discussion at this point? Please cast your ballots. That motion carries seven A's to one N. That motion carries seven As to one Nay. Find my agenda here. We're on to item nine, which is reports of the other committees, commission boards, and department reports. What are your wishes? A motion by Zachary to place them on file. And a second by Mr. Delaney. Any questions, comments on any of the reports? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Item 10, any referrals to committee? Okay, if you got any referrals, get them to the clerk. All right, so we're on to item 11, which is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Last night, you had brought up that you were gonna make a referral on the...
I think Jake was gonna.
Okay, so that is going in, all right.
Yeah, if Jake wants to put down writing or something like that to the clerk. All right, so we have items 11 and technically item 13, which are both closed session items. So the public knows that we have a closed session item regarding, let me find it, the council will discuss the update on the sale and development of the property in the downtown Triangle area. And we'll discuss negotiation strategies regarding the selling of the property and the terms of the development agreement for the downtown. And the second one is regarding, the council will discuss negotiation litigation strategy with an update on the mediation session regarding litigation involving the new wastewater service agreement with the village of Beeren. No action will be taken on those items and we will adjourn in closed session. So to make it official, in open session, the council may vote to go into closed session under section 19.85 par. 1 par. E of the Wisconsin statute, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And the first one is in closed session, the council will discuss the update on the sale and development of the property in the downtown Triangle area and discuss the negotiated strategy, strategies regarding the selling of the property and the terms of the developer's agreement for the downtown development. What are your wishes? Oh, we have a motion by Venemen to go into closed session?
Yeah, a motion to go into closed session.
And a second by Bemke. All right, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Will be in closed session and I guess we can take a few moments if anybody needs to use the restroom.